Okay.
Gary, can you just confirm for me, so we right currently, right now, we do not have Nicole?
No, Nicole is up. I'm going to read you who I see on the meeting, okay?
Thank you.
Gary Rodman, Amy Polish, John Spurger, Nicole Dash, Tom Stelmacher, and Andy Like is one of the call-in numbers.
All right, so that leaves us with nine or eight people. Nate Zimdars is not online.
As far as I can tell, Nate.
At what time?
Nate and Betsy. Oh, Betsy has joined.
Okay.
So let me add Betsy.
Hello, folks.
Hi, Betsy.
Hello.
Just as an FYI, I am trying to join the meeting with my regular website, as I always do, and it's telling me I have not been added to the roll call.
That's correct.
Okay, good.
So hold on.
Thank you, Gary. I'm going to mute my microphone now.
Um, I'm.
Nate is Nate is on with a phone call and needs to be added to the meeting.
Very good. I am trying to add Nate and Betsy now. I believe they are added to the meeting and can now join the meeting. Tom and Nicole need to join the meeting as well.
All right, it's Betsy, and I am in the meeting. Thank you, Gary.
You're welcome. So let's wait a couple more minutes to give Amy, Nicole, and Tom a chance to join the meeting.
And Gary, you said Josh was not on?
To the best of my knowledge, Josh is not on.
I have a text out to him, so we'll wait to hear.
Okay. So far, um, so far Nicole and Tom, you you have not joined the meeting.
I'm unable to join it, Gary.
Okay.
Maybe try to refresh your browser, Tom, or refresh that page. It's that little round circle thing in the upper left.
Josh said he's in the call already.
Okay.
So he needs to be added to the meeting.
Oh, here.
Josh, you're added to the meeting, and you should be able to join. Okay, Josh has joined. So what we could do, if Nicole and Tom are unable to join, I guess they can verbally give us their vote and their seconds, if they have any. Tom, can you confirm that you that we can hear you?
I'm here, Gary.
Thanks, Tom.
Maybe I can move on my other computer.
Okay, give it another try. Nicole, can you say something, please?
There, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay.
Are you, have you, I'm sure you've tried to join the meeting, is that correct?
Yeah, I just need another minute, I think.
Okay. Very good. Okay, Tom is joined.
Am I in?
Yes, thank you. Very good. Okay. We will begin. This meeting is called to order. Roll call has been taken electronically. We are in accordance with open meeting laws. I had no, okay, there we go. This meeting of the Ripon Area School District Board of Education has been properly noted in accordance with the open meeting law in state statute 19.84 and related legal references. I would like to add that our board policy, PO 0100, states, "The law requires that board members must be present in order to have their votes officially recorded in the board minutes and be available for a roll call vote. A board member's presence at a meeting includes his or her presence if attending by phone or other manner of remote access, so long as such remote access is compliant with state law. And in reviewing the recent advisory from the Wisconsin Department of Justice on the COVID-19 situation and the open meeting statutes, I am satisfied that we have complied with public access requirements." I'll now read the statement of district vision. "One of Wisconsin's finest school districts, fostering excellence for all through innovation. And we do this through our six core values of integrity, excellence, commitment, collaboration, innovation, and kindness. For the sake of those attending the meeting, particularly the public, I ask board members to identify themselves before they speak. And while we are generally very good about this, let's all make a special effort not to speak over each other this evening." Public comments. Jolene, have you received any written comments?
No, Gary, I have not received any written comments for this meeting.
Thank you, Jolene. We did not discuss visitors' comments. We can certainly allow visitors up to three minutes if they wish to speak with regard to an agenda item. I am not hearing anybody say they wish to do so. I'll wait a few more seconds. Okay, thank you. We'll move to adoption of the agenda. Is there anybody who needs to adjust, thinks we need to adjust the agenda? Thank you. Let's move on to announcements of contributions to the district. Superintendent Witrock.
Hi, Gary. Good evening, everyone. We do have a number of donations that we want to acknowledge, as we're very thankful for those. Daniel Recker donated $2,000 in his parents' name. And those were dollars were to be used to pay for any outstanding lunch balances for any of the students across the Ripon schools. And his parents were Judson and Helga Rickards, so we're thankful for that. There was an anonymous donation of $700, and that was made to Murray Park Quest families, again, for any school lunch debt that may be outstanding. The Ripon Lions Club donated $500 for our Murray Park Quest French Adventure program. However, due to the coronavirus, that program, at least for this year, is on hold, so that donation will be held in a fund for an upcoming year where we're actually participating in French Adventure. And then Jeff and Sheri Common donated just under $500, and that's for resistant bands and Quick Globe coaching sticks for the soccer program. So again, we're thankful for for those donations.
Thank you, Mary, and thank you to those donors. We now move to a special presentation on the district's facilities. Brian, are you here, and would you like to walk us through the presentation?
Sure, can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
All right. I will give you a quicker version of it, if that's all right with you guys. Just wanted to kind of give you an update as to what we've been doing in facilities for the school year, looking at some of the projects that we've completed, some of the projects that are on the horizon, really looking at lighting and just energy savings in general, and then looking at an update on natural gas, which the board approved a year ago to move to transport gas, and now sharing some of those savings that we've seen so far.
Do any board members have any questions for Brian with regard to his summary or the document that he provided to the board? Okay. Thank you, Brian. And I do appreciate the detail that you used in preparing that update.
And my plan is to update again once this, at the conclusion of the school year. Looks looks very promising on some energy savings. Obviously, we'll have a little extra, but just just showing you what we've done and looking at how the private projects are essentially going to pay for themselves with the amount of less energy use.
It's fantastic. Thank you very much. We'll now move to the consent agenda. I will take a motion to approve the consent agenda. Or, on the other hand, if somebody has a particular item that they need removed from the consent agenda, please say so.
I'll make a motion, Gary.
Okay, please identify yourself.
That was Nicole. Sorry, yep.
Thank Nicole.
And Nate will second.
Thanks, Nate. I'm working on that. Okay, I'll call for the vote. Okay, and the consent agenda is approved. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda, under new business, is to consider the approval of the social emotional learning plan curriculum and screener pilot. I'll take a motion to approve, and then we can discuss.
This is Betsy. So moved, Gary.
Thank you, Betsy.
Does Andy second?
Thank you, Andy. Okay. Does anybody have any questions or concerns about the SEL curriculum or the screener pilot recommendation? Okay, hearing none, I will call for the vote. The motion is approved unanimously. Thank you. Next, under new business, we will consider approval of the charter school contract renewals with Catalyst Charter, Quest Charter, and Journey Charter. The three contracts have been provided as attachments, and we did discuss these contracts at last month's meeting. I'll take a motion to approve, and then we can have discussion.
This is Amy, and I'll make a motion to approve the contracts.
Amy, thank you.
I'll second.
This is John. Okay.
So was that Nicole seconding?
Yes, sorry, John.
Okay. Okay. Let's discuss if is there any, are there any questions of any of the three contracts that any of any board members have?
I do have a question, Gary.
This is Nate.
Nate.
Thank you.
Yep. In looking at the quest document, I noticed this would be on page six, under D, number four. It says, "No more than 10% of a charter school's enrollment shall be from automatic enrollment preference," and it is highlighted in blue. And I do not remember when we discussed this last, that the 10% was in there. And I noticed that this was on the other documents as well, but it wasn't highlighted on the other documents. So if anybody could provide just a little clarification on that, that would be greatly appreciated.
Hi, Nate, this is Renee. I guess I was thinking that that was the wording that we had had from before. The reason that we had highlighted that section was simply because of how it was put in earlier, and I think that that blue part, Mary, had you pasted that part in? Was consistent with the other ones?
That's what we were looking to do, and I'm wondering if it's highlighted. I don't know why it's in blue as as opposed to yellow.
Yeah, me either. I think.
The blue part is part of the statute.
Yeah, it's standard language.
Yeah, so I think that, Mary, you had pasted it in because to keep it standard within the other ones, and I think that's why it was in blue. As the changes that our team had made were in yellow, so I think that's where the color change, color difference was.
Okay, thank you, Renee. Appreciate that.
You bet. Thank you.
Do board members have any other questions about the contracts? I'll note that some changes that we had discussed last month have been incorporated, and well, that's all I wanted to say.
This is Betsy, and thank you for noting that, Gary, and thank you to the Governance Councils for their work on that in the in the past month.
Are there any additional questions or comments from the board?
Gary, this is Amy. I just have a quick question. Do, if I've missed it, I apologize. Do we have numbers at this point for Journey, where the numbers are coming in for applications?
I know I know Tanya's here. Tanya, I want to, if you could let us know what you're looking at for sections with Journey. I want to say it's two every grade level, but three at first grade, etc.
I did do a memo to the board. I don't know if that's if they have that, or had the visual on it. If I missed it, Tanya, I'm sorry. I apologize. That's okay. Do you have the numbers in front of you? If not, that's okay. I can touch base with you later on the numbers for Barlow and Journey where you're at.
Amy, this is Jolene, and while you were discussing that, I did pull up Tanya's memo that she shared, and I can read that off for you if you'd like. So according to her memo dated March 18th, Barlow Park Charter had 95, Journey Charter had 126. The legacy Barlow Park School was at 63, and Odyssey Academy of Learning had zero interest from families.
Jolene, this is Nicole. That was March 18th?
Yeah, can you share that on here? I assumed that would be on the board agenda, and I didn't realize it wasn't.
I don't see that email either. Maybe we could just forward it back to us.
Do the numbers affect the way anyone is going to vote on the on the the motion?
This is Amy. It does not. I was just curious. I'm sorry. I hadn't seen that memo, so I apologize if I missed it.
Well, I'm not sure that we actually got it, but.
I don't think it was sent out. I think it's an update more related to what's happening with the the new charter school on how the sections fell out. Forward that to you. But, Jolene, I'm wondering if can we attach it to this agenda item, or is there a place that would be appropriate, maybe under school updates? Maybe highlight it at the next one that might, then when they get to that one, they'll see the memo.
Will do. I'll work on it right now.
Thank you.
Fantastic.
Thank you. No problem.
Are there any other comments or questions with regard to the the three charter contract renewals? Hearing none, I will call for the vote. And the motion passes unanimously. Thanks, everybody. And thank you to the Governance Councils for their work on this, particularly the presidents of the Governance Councils.
And to our principals for relaying messages back and forth between school board and Governance Council. Thank you all.
Thank you. Yes. Okay, the next motion, the next action item is to approve the preliminary budget and new staffing positions for the 2020, 2021 school year. Let's have a motion, and then any discussion.
This is Andy. I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Andy.
This is Amy. I'll second that.
Thank you. Okay, the motion is on the is on the floor. Perhaps before we have a discussion, Jonah Adams could outline the major points of the preliminary budget and the rationale for what is presented.
Okay, hi, everybody. This is Jonah.
Hi, Jonah.
Hi, everybody. So on the spreadsheet, I've tried to, we've tried to estimate revenue for next year based on a few things. We are assuming that open enrollment will increase by 60 students. We do know already, or we have good estimates for what the open enrollment rate will be per student same for per pupil aid. And we can pretty much, if we can estimate our enrollment, we can get a pretty good idea within the revenue limits as well. So we can look at those three areas of revenue, which is most of our revenue. And we can see that revenue is going to go up next year. And then if you look in the right-hand column of that spreadsheet, you can see that our estimate is that revenue would go up about $600,000 for next year, mostly because of new open enrollment. And then with that, the plan is we need to, with all these new students, we need to make Odyssey much more robust with more full-time employees, and so included with that is making our secondary teachers full-time, adding an elementary teacher, adding a guidance counselor, and adding, if I didn't say it, an elementary teacher, I think I said that, as well as district-wide having a pupil services director. And then we were assuming that some projects would not happen, so there would be some savings from this year's budget to next, from the turf project, and the playground project, and the boiler project, and then some other savings like from utilities and so on. Right now, there's a lot of this that's really unknown with how the year is going to play out, and how many of those projects are going to actually get done this year. It's possible, you know, there's a lot of unknowns. So I don't know exactly how, you know, this is a very preliminary budget, and a lot of this was developed before we were looking at this crisis that we're in right now, so. Yeah, I'm not sure. But anyways, the budget that we have here is it shows the new revenue equaling the new expenses is kind of what the overall plan is, so.
As Jonas said, one of the biggest changes right now, we have with the with the closure of schools, we had moved our custodial team into summer maintenance mode, so they were starting to do some of those projects, and we're waiting to hear specific guidance from the governor, supposed to be out tomorrow in terms of being able to continue with some of those projects with the school closure, or if we need to not have anything but essential work continuing in the buildings.
Are there any other comments or questions that board members have with regard to this motion? I will say, I will say that from my point of view, the rationale, you know, as Jonah said, we we don't really know what the future holds. But the rationale is based on the information that was available, probably up to the past couple of weeks. And since it's a preliminary budget, I think, you know, I'm certainly going to with the understanding that obviously the health crisis is going to have, you know, all kinds of effects on our on our district, and we'll deal with them as as facts become available. Are there any other, does anybody else want to say anything before we vote? Are there any other, does anybody else want to say anything before we vote on this motion?
Mary, can I just ask, I'm not sure if there was the inclusion of the behavioral interventionist that we had discussed as well. I'm just maybe not seeing it. I might be missing it now.
Mm-hmm. It's under expenses.
Okay.
Second line. Yep.
Thanks, Renee. Any other? Okay, I, let's call for the vote. And the preliminary budget recommendation passes unanimously. Our next action item is to consider the approval of hiring a middle school band teacher. I'd like somebody to put the motion on the floor, and then we can, if there are any questions, we can ask, we can ask them.
I'll make a motion to approve the hire.
I'll second it. This is Betsy.
I'll give you that, Betsy.
Thank you.
Who is the second? Was that Nate?
Nate made the motion.
Okay. All right. Does, are there questions about hiring Mr. Erickson to be the middle school band director? Or comments?
Can he do online band?
Hopefully we don't have to do that.
Right?
Well, I, I don't think it's a totally crazy question. I
Thank you, Gary.
I'm pretty sure that that Sandy is doing that.
Yeah, we'll be trying it.
We'll be trying that.
Yeah.
Yes, okay. Let's call for the vote. And the hire is approved. Thank you very much. Our next action item is to approve the transfer of Paige Hines as, as requested. Would somebody care to move that?
This is Andy. I have to move.
Yeah. And just a qualification, this is a voluntary transfer.
Okay, so Andy moved, and I need a second.
Amy, I'll second.
Thank you, Amy. So it's a voluntary transfer, and it was recommended. It was recommended by Renee. Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, I think I called for the vote already. Sorry about that. And that motion passes unanimously. Okay, before we move to possible upcoming action items, I do want to take this time before people start leaving the meeting to sincerely thank Jolene and Travis for all of the work that they did to get us set up for this, this, I, I think unprecedented remote meeting, a regular meeting of the School Board. And I just wanted to make sure that I got, I got that in before we, we move much further.
You're welcome.
Now, we move to possible upcoming action items. And we have, the first one is to explain the recommendation to purchase equipment to refresh our fitness center. I'm not sure who the correct person is to to lay this out for the board. Is it Brian, or is it Jonah, or perhaps Mr. Bungy?
Or Randy? I'm not sure either.
Or Randy.
I can talk a little bit about it because I worked with Bill as we looked at the need of it. And then we can have everybody jump in, you know, and, and help with it. But this is something that we looked at last spring. Because all the equipment in the fitness lab is getting to, to the near end of life or starting to fail. And really looking to come up with a, a replacement pattern so we can make it more manageable. The equipment that's listed here is the, really the dire need stuff that our fitness lab right now is either lacking or is, is way past its, its expected life. And then really kind of getting the equipment that aligns with the curriculum and that is needed to, for the FIAD area. The FIAD, the FIAD teachers did do a virtual tour of the weight room, which I believe was shared with the board, just to share what their thoughts and feelings are. That way we could do a well-rounded representation of the need.
Thank you, Brian. Questions for Brian or comments?
I thought the videos were well-done, the video tours.
And just, just I can add one thing. The, the three vendors that we, that we have received proposals from did exactly the same equipment. And some of the, a lot of the equipment is state contract pricing. So they either have to get the state contract pricing or beat it.
I guess I have a question about the, in particular, the treadmills and ellipticals. Those aren't being replaced by this proposal.
They are not at this point. They still do have some life in them, but we're looking, you know, what was the highest need to address first.
Okay. And those also, do those also date from 2005?
I, I believe most of the items were part of that original PEP grant.
Yes, they do. Sorry, sorry, Brian. Yes. That's, those are original machines from 2005. You turn your volume down, please.
Yeah, thanks. I think that it's very wise that you're looking to replace those because 15-year-old equipment like that can't, it can't be in the best of shape.
Correct. And then also the humidity that is in there throughout the summer really does a toll on, on all the machines.
Right. Those are under contract, under maintenance, right?
Currently, they have a company coming in every year or two to service the equipment.
All right.
Usually that happens twice a year, Gary, where that Summit Fitness comes in and, and works on the equipment, usually once in January and once in the summer.
Hi, this is Betsy. Am I reading these proposals correctly? It seems that the equipment that is first up for replacement are the free weights? The dumbbells? Is that, am I reading things correctly?
I can't answer to that. Maybe Brian can, because I know Bill has been working with Brian on that, but.
Yeah, the, the proposal is to get squat racks, free weights, bars, and dumbbells with the first parts. Oh, and some benches to be used with the dumbbells.
Okay, so as, as somebody that works out in the gym fairly often, the, the free weights tend to get heavier use from males. Females tend to go more toward the machines. Are we replacing this equipment in a way that is accounting for the needs of both our boys and our girls?
I think the, the, the stuff that we're trying to target right now is in pretty bad shape, like it's rusted, the benches are ripped. The, the weight racks are unstable. So the things that we're replacing right now are in really bad shape. I think some of our machines are actually in excellent condition. I think some of the, there's some of the newer pieces that we have in the gym.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Betsy. I have to admit, I was wondering that myself.
Yeah, very good question. And it's good to, to qualify that.
Are there any other questions about this upcoming action item? Okay, hearing, hearing none. Let us move to the next item, which is legislative updates. And I'll ask Mary to summarize the most important updates.
Absolutely. I can tell you as I speak with the other administrators that our, our inboxes have been overflowing as never before. And it, as I know Chrissy said a couple times with staff, I look at the data on this and it feels like it was months and months ago already. With the information, the, the good news, as you'll see and hear, DPI is moving forward with a process to approve waivers for instructional minutes. So that it will be much easier for us in terms of, of moving forward with our work this year with teachers and students online. While we are going to be coming forward to the board, we actually need to do a public hearing to have the board make that request to, to DPI. I do want to ensure you that we have a plan to interact and connect with all of our students and ensure that everyone is involved in participating and learning as we go forward. This is new territory for us. But to have the support from the state to make things reasonable and possible is, is so very appreciated. And one of the things you'll notice is that there is a pause on state testing. And so in some ways, we get substantial instructional minutes back because our kids won't be involved in testing this spring because it would be nearly impossible to do that virtually. Other things that you'll see there are just some, some information regarding special education. Obviously, it's not ideal to meet the needs of our students who have special needs remotely, but we'll continue to do what we can online. Speech and language is something that, you know, we'll continue with those therapies. I know even FIAD teachers were talking about getting equipment to students that they could use at home and trying to provide support wherever we can. We have added our instructional aid support team and assigned them in many cases to work more closely with our special education teachers to try to just double the staff that we have to be able to push in and, and do some of the support things. But again, we're learning as, as we go. The other item that's listed here in this update is with regards to school meals. And as of today, we did begin our process for curbside pickup of meals, including a breakfast and a lunch. And that is for anyone who is 18 or under that's in our community to be able to come and, and pick up those meals to be able to have that, that breakfast and lunch. So it goes beyond even those students who participated in our free and reduced lunch program in the past. We do want to make sure that we get meals out to anyone that needs them. And so we've asked for families to contact us if they need to have meals delivered to them. We served 160-some meals today with the curbside pickup. And then maybe another 10 or 12 went out through delivery. But we definitely want to get that word out to our community that if they are unable to come to us to pick up the meals, we will find a way to get the, the food and the meals to them so that our, our children are fed. And I continue to hear of the shortage on the grocery shelves of food. And so I think it's really important for our families to know that this service is there and can help take a little strain off of, of what they're having to do. And it, it shouldn't be viewed as something that's only available, again, to our students and families who've qualified for free and reduced in the past. It's open to any and all families. So please help us spread the word on that. And then just again, just continued information regarding some of the resources and things that are available. I was just reading a letter that was put out by the emergency room doctors in the Miami area. Just again reaffirming to everyone that it is so important that we practice social distancing and that we really minimize our contact with others because our ability to stay ahead of the, the curve on this and reduce the numbers of, of cases of COVID-19 really, really depends on all of us taking those steps to stay apart and to support each other virtually and remotely. And yet to still ensure we have that human contact with phone calls to neighbors and, and those around us to see what people might need from us. So very, very new, very new process for all of us. We spent the day working virtually with staff, and I can't, I can't thank our, our leadership team, our Principals, curriculum, facilities and grounds, special education, working with Jolene in our just PR department, getting things up onto our website, Travis for helping families. Help me, guys, make sure I'm not missing anyone out there. It has been so busy. We've spent a large part of spring break preparing for today and getting our staff ready for tomorrow. Getting essential items out to students, making sure families have devices and hotspots so that they have internet access at home. And, and really, we're, we're in very, very new waters here, and the playground changes every single day. So I, I just, I can't tell you enough how proud all of you need to be as, as board members in a community. Our team is second to none and have just stepped up to, to the, the challenge and are doing phenomenal things and responding to the needs of our families. But again, just that reminder to our families to let us know what you need.
Thank you, Mary. Yeah, I'd like to reiterate, I am just in, in awe of the amount of planning that our, our administration and our teachers have put into what we're gonna, what we're able to do so that we can respond to this emergency. And, you know, it's, our response will not be perfect. And there'll be glitches, but I, I am so proud to be associated with this, with this district. Thank you very much.
Mary, I just have a single question and then a comment. My question is in regards to the curbside meals for our community. Just to be clear, is it for anybody under 18, or is it for anybody who is a student enrolled in the Ripon Area School District that is allowed to get those meals?
And I know the answer. I'm going to let Jonah answer that because he's been working so closely with Brian and with Bryonye and Aviance to, to do that. It really is, it really is for anyone. But I'll let Jonah and Brian speak to that a little bit and maybe describe just what the process looks like and how we're ensuring everyone stays safe while we provide that service.
Okay.
Yeah, it is, it's an extension of the Summer Food Service Program. So because we started that last year, all the districts that were eligible for that program are now eligible for this early program. It's, it's run the same way. So we, it's a federally funded program, and it, it is for children. It includes 18-year-olds and under. So even kids that are So even kids that are not yet school age can attend uh or can get the uh the meals for free. And it does include any children. So if there were any children from nearby districts that uh wanted to participate, they could. Or if anybody had visiting relatives or something, uh, they could also participate. Um, as far as the safety, they have uh Brian and his crew uh have drawn out lines that lead up to the middle school. Um, there's kind of a roundabout area where where the vehicles pull in next to the building. The staff come out, uh, they have gloves and the the food is on a tray. The driver of the vehicle reaches out and grabs the bagged lunch um without ever, you know, making contact with the staff, grabs the bagged lunch and um can drive away. The driver does not have to have the the children in the vehicle. So if they're picking up for three children, there there doesn't have to be any children in the vehicle to pick up. Um, so we're trying to keep people safe and it's, you know, it's definitely an important uh service right now that Aviance is doing for us.
Thanks for that update, Jonah, and a big thank you again goes out to all of you and our food services for the incredible work that's being done. I think it's great to know that a lot of barriers that we traditional traditionally see uh aren't barriers in this instance, and anybody can have access to that much-needed food. So that's, it's good to know, appreciate it. And then just wanted to share an additional comment in regards to all this. I was speaking with a teacher just before we began our meeting, and the teacher shared with me that throughout this process, as it has evolved over the last week and a half or so that they have been floored by the compassion and intent that our district has been showing our staff and everyone in this district since all of this broke out. There are other districts that may have had a simple meeting and then said, full speed ahead, we're just gonna plow through this thing. And our district is just being very intentional in going through this. And once again, want to applaud all of you for your tireless work and effort in adapting to this ever-changing crisis. So thank you.
Thank you, Nate. We are certainly a family and and we want everyone to feel that where this is concerned. And I know I've had conversations with Amy just around getting food out to our families. And I think that's probably the most important thing um that we need to share out of this meeting is that we have food and we needed to get to those families and those children that need the food. So please spread the word. Um, we can serve more meals and we can deliver more meals.
Awesome. Mary, this is Amy. I just want to also applaud you and our entire team. Um, and just offer to you and our admins in each one of the buildings, if there's anything specific they need from us or from me at the food pantry, um, please call um or text anytime.
Jonah, do you want to speak to a minute, uh, just for a minute about um the library books? Because I know that's something a couple of parents have shared with me with the libraries down. How can kids get access to books? And and I know a number of different ways were shared today um just through our meetings with staff.
Yeah, I'll talk about a couple of things. Uh, we don't have everything perfect right now. Uh, we're working on it. But um, there's two things that I'm working on or that the district is working on. And then there's other people throughout the district working on other things. But um, we have a program called Learning Ally. Um, and Reading Specialist Mary Wegner has uh volunteered to help with this project. But we're gonna make sure that the program allows uh eighty thousand audiobooks for students, and they've opened this up to all students now in unlimited uh subscription. We had been paying for ten seats, and now they're giving it to all of our kids. So that'll be one thing that's gonna be rolled out very soon. But um, Mary's working on that, Mary Wegner. Uh, I think Connie Woski and Nicole Trachinsky are gonna work on this as well. Um, and uh, so there, we're rolling it up, but it, we have to create accounts for all of the students in the district. So that'll give us audiobooks. And then another thing that we're working on is um the Wisconsin Library Consortium has an online database of thirty-five hundred books. And these are eBooks that students can read on devices. And so we we just uh signed up for that last week, and this is gonna be rolled out as well. Uh, but they, uh, it's kind of the ball's in their court right now. They need to tell us the next steps, and they told us it takes about five business days to process. So sooner our our kids will have access to those eBooks and then they'll also have audiobooks. And I know that um that, you know, the principals are finding other things. I know Tanya Sanderfoot said that uh Scholastic is offering a lot of access to their books online. And uh, I'm sure some of the principals could talk about some other access to books um that are happening, but.
And and maybe we don't have to do it right now, but I wanted to reassure the board um and anyone in the community listening that we're working to get access to books out to our kids um as well. Thank you, Jonah.
Are there any other questions or comments for the superintendent? Okay, uh, we will then move on uh to the next item uh, which is a technical correction uh for the name of the district compliance officer to reflect the current special education director. Uh, does anybody have any questions about about this?
We didn't list the policies because Jolene and I are about twenty or twenty-five different places or more that the name needs to be changed.
That sounds about right.
And that not surprised me.
And the next agenda item on there under my updates is uh just related to pandemic plan. But you actually are seeing the plan um enacted because when I first put this on the board agenda, we were gonna talk about the plan that was um in place should we need to close school. But uh, we are full feet ahead, so a lot changes in in a week.
Absolutely. Uh, with regard to the pandemic plan, we're we're executing it now. Um, are there any other questions or concerns that the board has uh for the administration? Okay, I think it's obvious that you are reacting to rapidly changing the rapidly changing situation in a rapid fashion. Um, and we are, I think I can say that we're confident that you'll continue to do that. Next, we'll move to um operations reports. And we have reports from the offices of each of our buildings.
And you'll notice that under the Barlow Park um is the memo that Tanya was referencing before where she's um noting the likely number of classrooms at grade levels in the options that our families will have for next year.
Yes, thank you. So you added that, yes.
And Tanya, do you want to speak to that a little bit?
Sure, um, you know, you can, you can, I guess, read the rest of it at leisure. Just wanted to be clear that the picture appears to be cut off um because there was, there were some student names and things at the bottom that I didn't want um to be placed in a public document. Um, but we've had um over two hundred eighty-four um families that um responded to the survey that um went out in uh school choice. And um, so two hundred eighty-four responses was pretty awesome. Um, we did um contact families as we usually do um during that last week to make sure that we had their school choice um answers in. And um, we still have fifteen um students that we are just working to connect with. Um, and some of them just, we just haven't been able to get a response yet. Um, the numbers actually are working out very, really perfectly for class sizes next year. Um, but there will be a few families that will want to call to see if they're interested in making a switch to another school to either make a full class or a smaller class size. So you'll notice our class sizes at the legacy school, um kindergarten's only at eleven. So we want to either um add students into that section or um encourage those families to go into a journey section for kindergarten because those numbers are a little bit lower. Um, and we did have a lot of families that selected multiple um options for schools. Um, and so that makes it a lot easier for us to be a little bit more fluctuating with um with moving students from one school to the next. And those were the numbers, the names that were cut off the bottom. Um, and then based on this, I was also able to send out a survey to all of our staff. Um, and the staff are able to um identify which schools they would be um interested in um working at like next year. And many of them selected multiple schools. And then um which grade levels were their preference or were they open to? And um, and then the third question was if they couldn't have both of those things, um, which did they prefer, to be placed in a certain school or to be placed at a certain grade level? Um, but uh, very fortunately, um, we were able to accommodate all of the requests. So we have those sections, which um also might make it easier for some of our parents to get in a different classroom sometimes if there's a certain teacher that they're looking for.
Thank you, Tanya. A lot of work done with this by your team, and we appreciate that effort and that connection with families to make sure um everyone is really comfortable with with the placement. And again, I know some parents said it's hard to make a choice because they feel like they don't know. And just that reassurance to them that there isn't a wrong choice. I mean, it really comes down to a preference because all of our schools will deliver the same state and board-approved curriculum and standards. Um, and and we have excellent teachers in all of our, in all of our schools, so.
I do make sure to let families know that um as a parent, there are a lot of things that are high-stake um things that you have, choices that you have to make. And um, and this isn't one of them. There's no wrong answer to this one. So um, I truly believe that we have a high-quality staff regardless of um which school that it.
Thank you, Tanya. Um, are there any other questions or comments with regard to the school operation reports? Okay, uh, we uh come to uh the part of the meeting that discusses uh curriculum highlights. Um, Chrissy, are you um in the meeting?
I am, yes, I am.
Thank you, Chrissy. Take it away.
Okay, Jolene, you're pulling them up. Thank you. Um, a couple of items, and so much has transpired since I have put this into our board meeting, um, including just all of the preparation for the virtual meetings and the launch of instruction. Um, through that delivery, so I don't really have a whole lot in there. Um, item number two addresses that a little bit. Um, but it doesn't merely cover just the tremendous amount of work and time that our principals, our admin team, our teachers have devoted to this. And I too will just reiterate how incredibly proud I am of the whole Ripon family who has just pulled together to uh to make this a successful launch for our kiddos. Um, I did put in number one, I just am reiterating what Mary had communicated from her legislative updates about assessments. Um, we will not be conducting um the spring state assessments uh for Wisconsin Forward or ACT Aspire. Um, we were able to assess all but six of our students for the ACT eleven. We did have a scheduled makeup date for March thirty-first, which obviously will no longer be taking place. Um, and we are seeking a waiver so that um obviously we will not be able to account um state assessments towards our accountability for next year's report card. So that's, you know, a pretty big update. Um, included, or I gave that information to all of our staff who are virtual meetings today too so that they are also aware of all of that information. Um, just trying to think if there's anything else on there. Um, summer school, um, also, I guess, just a brief update about that. Um, we have been busily preparing all of the booklets and things to go home. You have that in the agenda for this month to look at the booklet. Um, however, we are kind of in a state of hold in terms of sending that information out. Um, one, because it does require mailings and postage and all of those things with their staff not having access to the buildings with the stay in shelter or shelter-in-place mandate right now. Um, it may be delayed in terms of sending the booklets home or mailing those home to the families. Um, Nicole, I know you had asked a question about the high school offerings. And as I shared with you um through email communication, our courses and global study of health and driver's ed are actually a separate communication just because of the time that we need to get that information. Um, so that is why they were not included in the um booklets themselves. Um, finally, with the Ripon International Program, obviously, in terms of recruiting students at this point, that is completely on hold. Um, if we are able to offer summer school, however, we are looking at still offering our science and engineering camp for RHS students, as well as possibly expanding that to districts um to surrounding uh student districts um for them to be able to attend uh the camp as well.
Thank you, Chrissy. Are there any questions? Uh, clearly, your curriculum plans are certainly um in flux. We get that. Okay, uh, let's move on to the January food service report. Are there any questions for Jonah with regard to the January food service report or anything related to food service?
We just wanted to mention one thing about the food service program is that um we've been very happy with Aviance. Um, since we we knew that there were some problems in the past with delayed um invoices and so on, and it was hard for us to track our revenue and expenses. Um, but they've done an awesome job this year. And Bryonye and her manager um named Matt uh have done a really great job of of cleaning up uh some of the things that we had trouble with. They've always done a great job with the food. Um, but anyway, just wanted to share that.
It's good news.
Have absolutely. And again, I'm very proud of what food service is able to do for our community. Thank you. Um, we have the interim budget report. Uh, I would think that, Jonah, I would think that there's not any particularly unusual items for this period, but we may see some next next month.
Yeah, um, I think the way things are gonna go with this uh, the virus is that we're gonna start to see uh, you know, some significant savings uh in the second semester um that are not expected, especially with there's just, there's quite a few different things related to sports and vehicles and utilities, uh, purchase services, professional development, substitutes, extra time and overtime. There's a lot of things that are not gonna happen um as far as our expenses. Um, as far as our, there will be some new unexpected expenses, potentially with things like broken computers that need to be replaced, new online subscriptions, uh, maybe increased uh mailing and shipping costs, uh, less rental revenue. But I think overall, we're gonna see that we have uh, you know, some tremendous savings uh unexpected. And uh, so I guess in the coming months, we're gonna need to uh, we'll be talking about that.
Something to look forward to. Any other, any questions or comments from the board about the interim budget report? Okay, the, now we are ready to adjourn to executive session. We will adjourn to executive session to consider items exempted from public deliberation regarding personnel and teacher, probationary teacher contracts. Would somebody care to move this item?
I'm gonna move. This is Andy.
Thank you, Andy.
I'll second.
Second, Nate.
Okay, so I think that was Nicole seconding. Call for the vote. Tom, are you still on? Are you still on?
But I, I don't have a screen to vote.
You don't? Okay. Let's, let's, the votes of, let's see, I'm going to clear, I'm gonna clear it and call for the vote one more time. Sorry for my dog's background noise here.
I was wondering who had the dog.
Okay. Tom, how do you vote for adjourning to executive session?
Here we go. Here we go.
Okay, that vote passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, the public session is adjourned. And I think, Jolene, what is your, and Travis, what is the plan for going into executive session?
We'll have to log on to the next meeting. And I can email if you don't have access to, if you aren't used to using your calendar to pull that information, I can quick email that link to you all. Do you think that would be easiest?
Didn't you already send out? Oh, I'm sorry. This is Nate. Jolene, didn't you already send out an email that has a phone number for us to go into executive?
I, I believe I did. I, so it should be in your inbox. If you don't see it, let me know and I can forward it to you. Cause you all, you all were invited. So it should be just an invite.
Okay. I, I see it in the calendar.
Yep.
And if any board members are unclear about how to join the, the next meeting, please say so and Jolene will email you another invitation.
Jolene, this is Amy. Can I bother you to send that to me again, please? Sure, I'll send it off.
This is Andy. This is Andy, same thing, please.
Sure, no problem. Thank you. No problem.
Okay.
Please include Renee in that as well, Jolene.
Yep, I, I've already sent hers off.
Perfect.
Okay, so to everybody who has joined the meeting of the public session, thank you very much. I'm going to end the meeting now if I can. Jolene, I think you will need to end the meeting.
Okay, let me, I was busy sending out emails.
Yep. Make sure you stop recording to Jolene and then.
Yep, I'm going to do that right now.
Perfect.